Good morning, everyone. Welcome and thank you for being here and participating in the county government. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session for September the 26th, 2022 to order. And thank you again for all of you being here. It's invited our special invited guests, no elected officials this morning. Thank you, Brian. And as our tradition for starting our meetings with invocation and prayer, I'd ask Jason Phillips at Field do that for us this morning.
Dear Lord, we just come to you now, once again, gathering to do the will of the people of Paulding County. Father, I'd ask that you give divine guidance, your guidance, to these folks here. Lord, help us, help none of these folks to accomplish their will. Help them to accomplish your will. And please make it clear to them what that is. We just ask you to be in this room through the Holy Spirit and give us guidance as we talk through difficult issues, easy issues, as we talk through things that are good. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that many of the folks in this room, although Aching today had the opportunity to play a benefit this past weekend, Lord, for special needs baseball. Well, we thank you for the opportunity to celebrate those and to lift those up who need help from people in this room, Lord, help from you, most importantly. But thank you for the opportunity for these in this room to serve them. Help us to serve your people and to serve you in all that we do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again. It's a little unusual, we're having a Board of Commissioners meeting on Monday, but unless the hurricane gets worse, all the commissioners here will be headed down to Jekyll Island for a legislative meeting. Also, what's already happened in the city of Dallas on the square, and we had some of our law enforcement helping out over there, is candidate for Senate Herschel Walker came, and there was a good crowd there, so great morning for that. And he was fired up speaking, wasn't he? So, the minutes, the September 13th, 2022 work session minutes and the September 13th, 2022 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, our special team Paulding segment this morning is on what happened out of Chattahoochee, or the Chattahoochee Tech satellite out at the airport last week, the week before last.
We are at our Paulding County Airport, and we just did a groundbreaking for an aviation mechanic school. We're very excited, and there is more to come. Well, we've been working on this for a long time. When I say a long time, probably almost four years. And it is going to keep kids in our county that don't want to leave the county for work. We've got a lot more coming out here.
Got a couple ex-Delta guys also, they're going to be the instructors out here to facilitate the program. So, we're excited that this is coming, and it's actually coming to fruition now. It should be a six semester program. Once they go through the program, they'll have been taught everything they need to know. We're also going to teach a structures program. That's essentially the airframe of the airplane, how it's all put together, the different rivets and fasteners they use, and everything, the composites on the airplane. So, we'll have a program for that. We're going to have a program for the avionics, too. And then we're also going to have an upholstery program in there that will teach them how to manufacture and fabricate aircraft upholstery. When the individuals get out of this program, they'll have opportunities to go wherever they want. Anybody that likes the automotive field, the diesel field, people that like to work in electronics, all those people are a good fit in this industry.
These kids are going to have an education for jobs that are out there, hundreds and hundreds of jobs that are out there. It's very important that we have it right here and let our Paulding County kids take advantage of something as great as being an airline mechanic.
Thank you. I think you know the lady that was talking there. She may not know the gentleman who's over at airports for technical colleges in Georgia, his name is Alan Berkowitz, and we're going to be meeting with him several times. He was a Delta mechanic himself and did a refit of all the engines on the DC-8 Douglas Eights. He was over that whole program, so I think he's a 30-year Delta retiree. So, no invited guests this morning under bid awards. Item number two on the agenda is to discuss action to approve the purchase of a crime scene scanner from Pharo Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $75,166.02 to be funded by Splast and Ms. Pollard, and also has a backup in Colonel Huntington to tell us more about this.
Good morning. A couple of weeks ago, the sheriff's office solicited some quotes for this crime scene equipment, this scanner, and they received three quotes, all less than $100,000. And they evaluated those quotes based on the versatility and ease of use of the, and price of the equipment. They are recommending award to the second bid, F-A-R-O, Pharo, in the amount of $75,166.02. And I don't think I can give the equipment justice, so Colonel Huntington's going to give you more information about exactly what this will do for them.
I was hoping I didn't have to talk.
That's a worthy debate.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for considering this for us, but just to let you know, this piece of equipment for our crime scene unit, it's very up to date with technology. It will help us in court, more so than anything else, but it basically, you can take a crime scene and make it three-dimensional. And we will be able to walk the district attorney's office and prosecutors through crime scenes with this. It's got all kinds of capabilities as far as measurements and things of that nature. It will actually help speed up our time with the deputies and detectives on scene documenting everything that's there. And as our community is continuing to grow, we're having more complex crime scenes. So, this would be a huge asset to us and our team. We wanted to go with Pharo because after they did their testing and evaluation, it seemed the best fit for us. But also, the counties that surround us are using that same system. And it helps us to be able to help each other if we're utilizing the same type of equipment. And then again, the biggest thing for us was when they did the testing and evaluation of the system, they said it was, this is what they told me, they said, "Boss, it's so simple, you could use it." So, I'm not real computer savvy. I'm still kind of old school, go out and beat the bushes and things of that nature, digging up criminals, but they said it's good, and I trust them, they're the ones that are going to be working with it. So, we thank you for your consideration. I'll take any questions if y'all have any.
You don't need to tell us how to work it, but how's it set up? How do you get it in the scene? When you don't necessarily...
Basically, it's got different pieces of equipment, but the main camera, from what I understand, it sits on a tripod-type system. It almost looks like a surveying-type system, and then it's got the camera that sits on top of the tripod, and they can actually move it around in different positions on the crime scene, inside a structure, whatever they need to do. And then, working through GPS coordinates and things of that nature, it does its measurements and whatnot. So, currently, if we're presenting a case in court, you know, we'd have, may have a lot of photos and things of that nature, and measurements and drawn diagrams. With this, they'd be able to pull it up on the screen and basically just have you walk through that crime scene.
We might ask our court specialist at the end of the panel here if he's seen it used in court. I'd like to know if you've seen it operational. Frank?
No, Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen it.
So, it is high technology?
Yes, sir. Frank, they're telling our age.
Yes, and I concur with... I concur with his statement about old school, because I'm definitely old school, too. In fact, I worked with his dad a long time ago.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pollard and Colonel Huntington for sharing with us.
Yes, thank you for your time.
I would like to recognize Judge O'Connor and Randy Harris, the Director Public Defender. So, thank y'all for being here, always glad to see you. Sandy said, "Maybe you're a little sore this morning."
Hi, Brian, so you okay? Thanks, Sandy.
I've got video.
All right. We don't have any reports from committees or our departments this morning. No one signed up to speak on agenda items. Under the consent agenda, you got three items, starting with item number three, which is to authorize the chairman to sign the contract with American Tower amending the current lease to allow for additional equipment to be located on the tower. And Ms. Pollard is overseeing this. Item number four is to adopt amendments to Resolution 22-22, authorizing the finance director and the county manager as primary signers and authorizing them to designate alternate signers on the accounts. Ms. Pollard has that one also, and she also has the third and number five on your agenda, declare the following item listed as surplus and approve for disposal through auction or trade. And that's in the Fleet Department, a 1997 F-150. I'm not going to read out the serial number, it's on the table back there if you'd like to bid on it or get any more information. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of these three items to our regular business? Here, none, it'll stay where it is. And we'll move on to old business, which is none, and right into new business, item number six. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the engineering services master agreement in the amount of $500,000 for a one-year period, with the options to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for preliminary and final engineering of transportation projects with the use of another, good use of Splast dollars. And Ms. Parrish from DOT is here to replace that guy named George Jones on vacation.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Manager, Board of Commissioners. This item is really going to be pretty crucial for us right now. We've had a lot of turnover in our engineering staff. Currently, DOT does not have staffing available to perform our engineering design in-house. To be able to meet the needs for our engineering design, utilizing on-call consultants is a very effective way to meet that need because it affords us the ability to select specific services we need to supplement staff with, as well as provide capabilities our current staff does not have. Heath &amp; Lineback has performed the service for the county since 2016, and this will be our fourth renewal for their original engineering design services master agreement. Costs have and will continue to be billed on hourly basis, it will not be a lump sum contract. Funding for this agreement, if approved, would be allocated from Splast, and you know, DOT would like to recommend approval of the agreement with Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers in the amount of $500,000, with the option to renew this agreement upon approval of additional funding by the Board of Commissioners.
Erica, I guess renewing before the end of the fiscal year, if need be, that we just bring it before the commissioners in?
Yes, sir. Anytime we would ask for a renewal, we would bring it before the board, sir.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. So, I think I went ahead, so I'll back up to, Ms. Parrish just has a lot of these, that's why you're staying up there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number seven is to discuss action to authorize the chairman to extend the 2022 asphalt contract, contract two, with Baldwin Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $184,129.79 for additional subdivision street paving.
Yes, sir. So, this phase of Georgian Z2 was one of the phases that the county collected project improvement fees on, currently in the amount of $142,500. And this is in post two. Currently, this phase is 75% built out and has four roads that total about .69 miles of roadway. Those roads are not topped out, and because we collected the project improvement fees, the county would go in and pave those roadways. Currently, the streets are not topped, so Paulding County DOT requested that the current paving contract holders provide bids for the additional paving work for patching, tack, topping, and mobilization. We received three quotes, which Baldwin Paving Company in the amount of $184,129.79 was considered the low bid. That price come in 5.5% less than our engineer's estimate. If the board approves the request to pave these and the Georgian Z2, an additional $41,629.79 would be required from general funds to be used for the project after the project improvement fees that were collected. Paulding County DOT does recommend approval of authorization of the chairman to extend the 2022 asphalt contract, too, with Baldwin Paving Company in the amount of $184,129.79 for the additional subdivision street paving.
Everybody good with that? No questions in mind? All right. Item number eight, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with Southeastern Engineers in the amount of $64,658.75. Splast funds will be used for preliminary engineering design services for the ridge road widening from State Route 92 to Laird Road. It says here, "The Laird Road Project Located in Post Three."
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, Southeastern Engineers was contracted by the county to design a four-lane section between State Route 92 and Laird Road, along Ridge Road, to help mitigate future traffic growth. As plans have been progressing, the property located on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Route 92 and Ridge Road is in the process of being developed for commercial use. Through coordination with this developer and the Georgia Department of Transportation, it has been determined that a redesign of the ridge road widening project plans is required to reduce impacts to the proposed commercial development. A contract in the amount of $98,599 was approved by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners of January 28th of 2020. The cost for the redesign is $64,658.75, which would be funded through Splast if the supplemental request, funding request was approved. Paulding DOT would recommend approval of a supplemental agreement with Southeastern Engineers in the amount of $64,658.75 for redesign and coordination.
Any questions? Thank you very much. You got the next one, too, right?
Yes, sir.
As Baker Street would say, this is the Erica Parrish Show. Number nine, discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-35A, 25-35A resolution and order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the Macklin Road, Bobo Road, Mount Tabor Church Road quarter improvement project comprised of a .102 acres of fee simple right-of-way and a total of .104 acres of permanent easement, being project parcel number eight, tax parcel number R011469, AKA 140.2, .4, .017, .0000, Second District, Third Section of Paulding County, Georgia, by declaration of taking method pursuant. And got Ms. Parrish again and County Attorney Mr. Phillips to join in on this one.
Can I start? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. So, this is in post one, this is an intersection, multiple intersections that have experienced significant delays in queuing, particularly during the peak hours and time periods. That project is for a single lane roundabout at the intersection of Bobo Road, Macklin Road, and also Bobo Road, Mount Tabor Church Road, along with turn lanes from the Macklin Road, Mount Tabor Church Road intersection, being located in post one. To be able to construct and maintain the proposed intersection improvements, additional right-of-ways and easements are required for the project, specifically for this parcel at Macklin Road and Mount Tabor Church Road intersection. Right-of-ways and easements for parcel eight on the Bobo Road, Macklin Road, Mount Tabor Church Road project, northwest quadrant of Macklin Road, Mount Tabor Church Road intersection. Roughly .102 acres of right-of-way, .104 acres of permanent easement are needed for parcel eight. The property owner has told our right-of-way agents that they do not wish to sell any property to the county for this project. We have been unable to acquire the property at this time, and to keep the project moving, we are requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve the declaration of taking so we can move forward with this project.
Have some to add, Jason?
I would just add that it's never the desire of this board to exercise its power of eminent domain to take property. It's always the preference that good-faith negotiations be attempted and be tried and be continued. But at some point, that is why the government does have the eminent domain power to do what the government believes is the best interest of the public purpose. And in this case, in order for the road project to continue, condemnation is recommended.
So, the owners there just refused to move on this?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Erica and Jason. All right. Conclusion of regular business. We've got public participation on non-agenda items. We're going to start with Mr. Tim Estes regarding voting machines.
Good morning. Tim Estes, lived on McCready Drive for over 40 years in Paulding County, and I'm excited to be in Paulding County and actually excited about our Board of Commissioners. I wish all the counties in Georgia were as cooperative and worked with the people as good as y'all do. Thank you for your actions on the letter, and I'm hoping that actually goes through the state. I, we, 70-plus, still don't trust the machines, though, but that will not stop us from voting. That is our right, that is the thing that we're going to do. We're going to flood the polls, and our biggest concern is we just want it to be fair and legal. And that's why we talk so much about the machines. And you say, "Well, machines is not the issue." There's five points I want to share with you about the machines. First, they are hackable. Next, they are illegal. Next, they're unverifiable. Next, the machines cost more than paper ballots. And then the next is they don't count correctly. How do you know that, Tim? That has actually been proven, Mr. Eric Coomer, Vice President of Dominion, says that they are not connected to the internet on tape. Then he says they are, and you can even get it through 5G. It's actually been proven. So, one of them's right and one of them's wrong, what they're hiding, but he's recorded for both of that. I've studied and researched everything I know to study and research, and the more I study and research, the more I can convince is the voting process here in Paulding County, we don't need the machines, okay? Can we get rid of the machines? We can say, we can't say we don't want to use them, we can't get rid of them, but we can. I think that's whatever law that is, I didn't write it down, Tim will probably know that. So, we do know they're actually hackable, and it's been proven through even several movies that Democrats put out, a movie called Kill Chain. If you've never heard it, they even say it's hackable. And then, we've even had the Rigged, we've had Suposium, we've had the 2000 Mules, the list goes on and on. Even had hackers brag on how quick they could get into the machine, and it's been all over there. They're illegal, and you've heard Judge, Supreme Court Judge Amy Totenberg saying that they were illegal to use. They're unverifiable, they've talked about the QR code, Curling versus Rassenberger, you can read that case on the QR code. The machines, I actually personally did a cost analysis here with the Board of Education, and the machines actually do cost us a little over twice as much as using a paper ballot. They don't count correctly. How do you know that, Tim? Cab County Commissioner, Post Two, Michelle Longspur, I believe is her name, noticed that she didn't have any votes, everybody knows about this, knows about, she didn't have any votes at all in her precinct. She questioned it, they went back, did a hand count, and come to find out that she actually won that race, and she had 3,620 more votes than the machine gave her for. So, I think there's enough evidence out there. I think the law 20-2-334 states that we can use paper ballots. If there's an issue with a machine, there is issues with a machine. Only thing we want is a fair, a legal voting system, so that we know our vote does count, and that's more concerning to me, because that's what kept the free enterprise system for many years, and I don't want to lose that. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Estes, and we have someone by the same name, first name anyway, Tim Sudrath on voting machines. Tim?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Don't y'all just love Tim Estes? He's gotten so passionate about the voting machines and everything, and you know, I'd just like to make a request, if y'all would consider trading him this 1997 Ford F-150. I saw his truck sitting on the side of the road up there, he broke down on his way over here, so...
I didn't break down a rail.
I want to thank y'all for moving forward with the letter that Commissioner Galloway initiated. And I went to the election board the next day, last Wednesday, or maybe two weeks ago. Anyway, Ms. Deidra Holden and I have had discussions since then, and she texts me last Tuesday and said, "We feel that 100% audit would be more thorough. Allowing the system to pick the ballots is very confusing for an RLA or risk-limiting audit. We will do 100% to put all minds at ease." I said, "That would be wonderful, the voters would love that." She goes on to say, "The audit that we are going to do is what you call a voluntary audit. It gives the Board of Elections the authority to set the rules." So, I said, "So, we would do 100% hand recount of a race of your choice, not a risk-limiting audit?" And she said, "Yes." So, I said, "We will be the gold standard for the whole state. It will assure the citizens of Georgia or Paulding County that we have transparency, not just fair and free, but we have transparent election process." So, I want to thank y'all for initiating that, and thank the election board, and the chairman is here today, and another member, and thank them for their efforts and following through on that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sudrath. All right. Pretty expeditious meeting this morning, and as we usually... All right, pretty expeditious meeting this morning, and as we usually close out with any announcements or celebrations, I hear from any of my fellow commissioners.
I want to make sure everyone knows about the transportation meeting on Thursday. We'll all be out of town, so we'll all miss it, hopefully, assuming no hurricanes hit. And, but it will be at the Events Place on Thursday, and it starts at six? Five to seven, okay, five to seven on Thursday at the Events Place in Hiram. Please come, you know, we get on Facebook and we see people go nae, 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 nae about roads and how things ought to be. This is your chance, come on. We welcome your input because we all don't want to sit in traffic, right? So, we would love for you to take part in that. You can also go online and take a survey if you are not able to make that meeting on Thursday. And you can do that through, I think we've got it on our Facebook page for the county, and so look there. And where else could we find that on the? Paulding Charting the Course dot com? Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, that's all.
Anyone else? Well, I don't know if this will work, you know, I'm not real good electronically, but. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourned by Mr. Kaker in the second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Stoverals in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned.